Okay. Welcome, everybody, to this... Bit of feedback there, is it? Welcome to this meeting of the Council Finance and Council Controlled Organizations Committee Meeting. I've got apologies from Councillors Newell and Stedman for absence, and I've also had one for councillor Hall that he's running late. You're willing to second those? All in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, confirmation of agenda, just move that we... Oh, sorry, hang on. No, I was going to say, there's no public forum today, so that's okay. And confirmation of agenda, just move that the committee confirms the agenda, and in regard to standing order 21/1, option C be adopted. Councillor Staines seconded, I'll move for the chair, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favour?
No.
That's carried, thank you. Against? No one. Now, just a reminder for item four, our declaration of interest. Has anyone got anything they would like to add or change? If that's the case, I'll move that we note the agenda and confirm the proposed management plan for elected members. Seconded councillor Wilson, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? That's carried, thank you. Now, Mr Logi and Dave Toomes, we've got the financial result for the year ended 30th of June. Would you like to speak to that? We will take it as read, but have you got any comments you'd like to make? Gavin?
Probably just to note, as we have in the recommendations, that this is the draft financial result for the end of the year. Obviously, we've got the auditors in now, just going through what we've done, and then we'll report back to council for the final meeting before the election.
Okay, is there any questions? Councillor Vandis.
On page 18, it talks about additional personnel costs, including unbudgeted recruitment activity. Looking at some of the charts, it looks like it's 2.3 million. Have I read that correctly?
That's correct, that's obviously not all recruitment cost.
No, but could you expand a bit on what it is? We've had consistent rises in costs of staff for a long time now, and I'm wondering, 2.3 million in a year, what accounts for that? It's a lot of money.
So, some of it is recruitment activity. Obviously, when, as part of the annual plan for 1920, there was an additional staffing coming on board, so some of this is reflecting some of those staff positions already in place or coming on board.
Are all of those extra staff in place, or are we going to see more of that coming?
So, the additional staff were budgeted as part of the budget for 1920, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure that they're all in place yet, but they will be during the year.
Okay, so that's 2.3 million up that I was worried about. Even more worrying seems to be consumables in general, that's gone up by 3.2 million. Consumables in general would be what?
So, if I refer councillors to page 33 and 34, there's a breakdown of the consumables in general. So, some of it relates to, there was an unrealised fair value write-down in relation to three investment properties of 900,000. There's some consultancy costs in relation to the Waste Futures project. There's some additional expenditure in transport in relation to work being done on the central city, harbour side and hospital projects. Regular storey services had additional expenditure to complete some of the consenting process, and that's partially offset by the income that's been generated by that activity.
And that accounts for 3.2 million dollars?
I think some of those is close to that, yes councillor?
Is it possible for you later on to email me that breakdown, so that I can have a closer look at it?
It's available on page 33 and 34.
A breakdown of the 3.2 million?
Yep, if you look at the, there's some numbers against each of those line items.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm sorry I've missed those, thanks for putting that out. Regarding interest costs, it talks about ongoing interest expense. I understand that we have a lot of it fixed at 4.65%, but that some of it is floating. Have you got a rough idea how much is floating and how much is fixed currently?
So, currently, we have 60 million dollars that are on the swaps that were put in place a number of years ago, and the balance of our debt is the floating rate, which is a rate that's set by the Treasury company.
So, 60 million is fixed?
Correct.
And how much is floating?
So, the balance, 140 to 160, obviously, as our debt goes up.
Okay, what about all the companies' debt? That's still financed through DCTL as well, isn't it?
That's all down through DCTL.
Yes, and what kind of, is that fixed or floating?
Again, I can't comment on the debt of the companies, I'm not aware of the exact breakdown of their debt.
So, I would go to DCHL to get that information?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? This is going to be very quick, would someone like to move the report? Councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Wilson, sorry. Oh, did you have a question councillor Staines? Okay, any discussion? In that case, I will put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Thank you, that's carried. Now, Mr Davie, the Waipori Fund, item six. Have you got any comments you would like to make relating to the quarter or to the year?
Yes, I'd just like to highlight that it's been a pleasing quarterly performance for the fund, up 4.1% and up 9.9% for the year, which is, compares favourably to the benchmark returns. And it's largely been led by New Zealand equities and also Australian equities as well.
How much of it's been beneficial from the exchange rate changing?
There's some gains due to, you know, the currency falling, and it increases the value of offshore holdings, but I haven't got a number to put on that right here, right now.
No. Is there any other questions? Councillor Gary.
Sir Davie, I wonder if you could expand on the comment on the bottom of page 42, in the last two paragraphs, you talk about the fund remains balanced for any future event risk. Are you comfortable with the level of risk and the protection we have in place for that?
Yes, well, 52.4% of the fund is invested in fixed interest, and a lower proportion is invested in equities. And the fund is what we refer to as a balanced income fund, and also the offshore equities are unhedged, so with event risk and if equity markets come off, normally the currency comes off at the same time and tends to absorb a little bit of that. But you're comfortable with the risk profile of the fund at the moment?
Any other questions? Just, oh, sorry. Councillor Alder?
Yes, I was just, my great... So, how do we invest this? Do we use treasury, or who do we use for investment partners?
DCTL is used. In terms of advice for equities, advice is taken from Craig's Investment Partners, and the equities are largely invested in income generating stocks.
Oh, thank you.
Now, councillor Hawkins has shown indication he's willing to move, that we note the report. Seconded councillor Hall, would you like to speak to that? Councillor Vandis?
Just like to say thank you for a very pleasing result. Good to see that we're keeping the equity in it as well as returning a profit. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Yeah, I too would endorse that, actually. It's been quite a stellar result, considering where we were sitting at the, was it December or January, things got a wee bit ugly. Equities worldwide got a bit ugly for a few weeks, but yeah, no, it's a pleasing result, but it's good. Okay, if that's the case, councillor Hawkins, you don't want to speak in reply, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? That's carried, thank you. Now, Ms Graham and Sharon Bodeker. Gift for the merril chains, item seven. Don't try them on, you might start to like them. Order, order. So, I take it people have read the report, has anyone got any questions? Or would you like to speak to it in the first instance, Ms Graham?
Just the usual report with the gift, the opura gift from Naitaui of Lisa Ternai, should be incorporated into the chain? If council choose to accept the gift, the thought is that we will, it won't be a link, but it will be something like one of the medallions, each of the chains has separate medallions donated differently, and somehow look to be incorporated in a way that hangs within the chain. It will take a little bit of thinking about how that will work, but with an appropriate carver would be commissioned to work with that design, and then with a goldsmith to ensure that it's incorporated appropriately with the chains. It may be that the time is taken to look at a bit of a re-linking of some of the other pieces of the chain as well, because it hasn't had any work done for quite some time, the two chains. So, that's the thinking. We don't have a design yet, and with the recent passing of Taru, we haven't been, there's been far more important things for the runaka to be focusing on, and so while we had hoped to have progressed, you know, before October if council accepts the gift, it may not have been quite that quickly.
Just thinking about that, is the thought that that medallion, the bit that hangs off the bottom would remain, it wouldn't be a case of that going on? Yeah, so...
But it may be that the chain needs to be shortened or lengthened or slightly tweaked within the style that it is now to incorporate it suitably, but that we would work on then.
Okay, councillor Vandis, you indicated the question?
Yeah, it talks about to be adjoined to the merril chain, is it the functional one or the display one that you were intending adjoining it to, and how heavy is it going to be?
The functional, that's partly consumed, is just to make sure that it's wearable for anyone with a slightly built beard or a strap in it.
Fairly manly, I haven't done that. Councillor Gary, you had a question?
Yes, that was part of my question, but I wondered, Ms Graham, if you could give us a little bit more background about the chains, because I don't know that all of us have that. I know they were donated, well, part of it was donated in 1909 by the Chamber of Commerce, one of the medallions, I think, but I'm not familiar with the, a whole lot of the background around the two. I've read, I've read some, you know, the report and so forth, but can you just articulate that, a little bit of background on the two? It does, yes, somewhat.
And so, speaking roundly, and the person who knew the most about the chains was Pam, and unfortunately, we don't have our Pam anymore, so what I tell you is stuff that we have gleaned over time.
And there is some stuff in the archives?
There is a little bit of stuff in the archives, but we haven't done a great, we haven't researched that in any great detail, except one of the medallions was given by the chamber, I think it was this one, in 1909. This one, I'm not entirely sure where this one came from, but it has Seren and Wright's name on the back, whether that was gifted by him or it was just incorporated. Each of the, oh, sorry. Each of the links is engraved for the name of the mayor who donated the medallion, and then it has corresponding gold links that join it to the other links. And each mayor has, as far as we can tell, provided a link, we haven't counted, and unhelpfully, the chain is not in any order, so it's entirely random which mayor, mayor's link is linked to which mayor. And so, we haven't had a look at that, and it might be that a more sensible way of linking them together.
So, I might understand, from what you just said before, that the, it was divided into two, because it was getting too heavy?
Back, if you look at the pictures outside the mayor's office, there is a period of time where the chain is a double chain, and at some point, around about the 50s, I think, from 1959, it gets split in two, and we believe it was for weight.
And has the other one been on display up until now, or has it been tucked away?
No, it's tucked away mostly, and how we would display it and where, we would have to give some careful thought to, because they are not without value.
Can I just ask questions, Andy? The links so far, so there's one per mayor irrespective of the number of terms they've served?
Correct.
So, there's no indication when you read the chain, how many, how many terms people served?
No, but it does say that the period of their tenure, so initially, mayors were elected for a year, and so there's a whole heap all at once, and then there is some like Sue Cliff, who served for an extended period of time.
Yep, yep, no, that's good. Were you finished?
Yes, my concern was around the pohnamui, the weight of the pohnamui, and so clearly that's been thought about.
Look, it may be that it hangs between, so across, rather than hanging off the bottom, that it's, there's a way of doing it, and it may be that we, to deal with the weight, the chain is shortened a little bit, but all of that will be worked through.
That's all open too, yeah.
Councillor Alder.
Chair, so on the bottom bit of the chain, the bottom bit that hangs down, what's that? Who's given that?
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce. I was just thinking, I don't know whether, could the pohnamui, could the Chamber of Commerce and Naia Tahu talk about putting it in that little bit?
All of that will be part of the design process, once we've seen the nature of the gift of the pohnamui that Naatahu are proposing.
Oh, cool, thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
I don't actually want to ask a question, in that I don't think one would question the very kind koha that's being offered up, and therefore, I'm happy to move that we accept with much arwa, the gift that's been offered, and, but also that we delegate to the CEO to come up with a design, because I don't think we need to want to do that by committee as how we do, how that happens. So, when it suits you, I'm happy to move.
I'm absolutely happy with that. Councillor Staines had already moved an indication to move.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Happy to second, so, so did anyone want to, so that's moved and seconded, councillor Wilson and councillor Staines, is there anyone that would like to speak to it? Councillor Gary.
I just wanted to acknowledge this generous gift, and a very moving gift, particularly in this particular week, when we have marked Tahu's passing. But I also want to acknowledge, in my own family, that my great uncle was the first mayor, I believe, to wear the chain when the Chamber of Commerce piece was added, and two of my great uncles, I expect, anticipate are on there, one during the war years, one in 1909. And so, this is very special to me. I haven't actually cited those particular medallions or pieces, links, but I look forward to doing that. And also, the other part of the history that we're not looking at today is the mayoress's chain, and the history around that is very interesting. The mayoress who followed my great aunt Etta, attended a meeting in Edinburgh and was very disappointed to find she was the only mayoress without a mayoress's chain, and really, a mayoress's chain was nay, but I've never seen it. So, it is about as well, but those are all very precious pieces of history. And so, in terms of this motion, that is a very special and appropriate and timely gift, and it is greatly appreciated from Naatahu.
You'd have a look for that at home if we haven't got it here.
Meeke. Yeah, look, I'm quite humbled, actually, that Naatahu have offered this, and to clarify, the, this could be the perception that this was offered to me, it wasn't, it was offered to the council. This is an acknowledgement from Naatahu that the relationship between the council and the two, runaka and alrohi, has become much warmer and deeper in the last while, and the whole of council can take credit for that. And I think this is a great acknowledgement from them of that growing warmth and depth of the relationship, and I'm humbled that it's happened in my term, and I'm very supportive of accepting it for posterity, because that's what it's about. It's about cementing the relationship between Naatahu in this area and our council.
Thank you. Councillor Alder.
I totoku that. Last year, we made an agreement with Kaia Tahu where we co-committed to investing in the partnership and their involvement in council, and I think it's an amazing thing, journey that we've come on, and it's relevant that it's like Tahu is passing on his baton to us all over the last weekend. It was, it was very sad, and in some ways, I'll look at it as a gift from him as well to carry on his legacy, so I think it's, it's really wonderful, and I'm really grateful for it.
Any other speakers? I would just also reflect that, I think it's a fantastic offer, and I think, I think the, in the time that I've been on council, I've seen a, I can't obviously speak to what was going on before, but I just, I found that dealing with Naatahu has been a pleasure, and it certainly was not in any way, it's always been that they're very honourable, and I have enjoyed dealing with them. Now, there is a change, obviously, with what councillor Wilson has declared, so that we are asking the CEO to deal with accepting the design, so... Boom. Top line. Would you like to speak to that now?
I didn't speak...
Write a reply?
My write a reply, which I'm going to take slightly broader. I think it's interesting that we use the crest rather than the, something of arms that I know is on the downstairs, and I can't think what you call that, the coat of arms, sorry, coat of arms, in this chain, because coat of arms actually reflects a relationship which has got a, it's got, I think, on one side and a Maori on the other. And this brings, adding kunamu to the chain, brings that partnership stronger and recognises it, because as you can see on the door, above, the crest above the door here, it doesn't actually speak to our Maori heritage to the same extent, except for the flowers, I think, on the right, being the natives. So, to that extent, I'm happy to see this, and I think it's combined those two stories with the coat of arms much better. So, that is why, and one would never question such a koha, it's absolutely fabulous. And I echo your thoughts, chairman. It has been a, not only a warming of the relationship, but a maturing of the relationship, I think, on our part as non-Maori. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? That's good, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, now we'll just move to the next item, item eight, which deals with the merril chains and the merril portrait, and I see the mayor is going to withdraw. Are you withdrawn, councillor Hawkins? Also withdrawn. So, any questions of Ms Graham or Sharon Bodeker? Councillor Vandis.
Under options on page 47, the recommended option that the portrait policy be amended to a photograph and that the council agrees to the new links to the merril chain, agrees to fund the new links to the merril chain, it says that there are no disadvantages that have been identified. Surely, the disadvantage of council funding them would be minus $2,400 to the rate pay? Should that not have been listed as a disadvantage?
It should, councillor, apologies for the oversight.
Okay, good. Now, the question of the photographic portraits, an amount of $23,000 plus GST has been mentioned. My understanding was that Suki Turner's portrait was $6,000, and I know of a local artist who's very competent, who has been known to do them for $3,000. Would this quite different level of funding sort of perhaps change the recommended option that you're talking about, given that a very expensive photograph of $3,500 as opposed to a locally produced work of art might be better value?
That's a question for councillors to determine, but the portrait of Mayor Turner never made it into the chamber?
No, I know, I tried buying it, but couldn't get it, even if I funded it entirely myself. I'm sure it would have been a cracker.
And I would note that, yes, in supporting portrait artists, you are supporting local community, but there are also photographic artists within the community who do photographic portraits, so they are all artists, just in different media.
So, it would be local in any event?
Yes, that would be our preference if someone suitable puts in a suitable bid.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
Good on you. There appears to me to be a number of issues here, and I just want to concentrate, I think they're very different for the chain and the portrait, and I'm wanting to only talk about the portrait in the first instance. One is the space that it takes up, and the bigger the painting, the bigger the cost or photo, and the other one is the actual cost for the work. Can I just understand what is in the budget at present, presumably under governance every triennium for this?
There is nothing in the current budget.
Okay. Would I be correct in believing that we probably don't have the capacity to keep on adding and have a worthy space for merril portraits of the size that has been there at present? Because that comes at a cost to store them, or someone gets shunted over or something. And would we be better to look at both size as well as medium?
That's challenging, because at the moment, I'd want to take the advice of the folk at the art gallery around this, because the size and nature of the council chamber does require works of a, of a certain gravitas to stand out on the walls, and so were you to have paintings that were too small, I wonder that the impact might be lost, and then having really small paintings sitting alongside some of them, the historic ones that are very large, may or may not be pleasing, because the art gallery arrange the hang as it currently is there at the moment?
So, we may not need new frames, we just move people round the frames? Well, storing a painting is certainly a lot easier outside of a frame, because I presume at some stage, it does look rather busy in there. So, the next question is, is there anything, my intention would be to move something along the line that we put X amount in the budget and leave it to the mayor to choose the medium that they want to be represented within in that budget? Would that would resolve the issue of media, that rather than just favouring the artists being photographers? Or not?
That's a different issue, I think. The issue of budget is separate from the type of work you want to have commissioned to recognise a mayor's term in office.
Maybe we should get the art gallery curator here to give us some advice on that too.
Councillor Benzema? Okay, I will hold that until I finish with the questions. Councillor Gary, question?
So, I'm interested in the history again, and I have tried to find this out, but haven't managed to. Are there portraits, given that the merril terms were one year at a particular time, and then two years and then three years, are there merril portraits of all of the mayors of this city?
I don't believe so, but I've not been able to confirm it. I don't think it was a practice back in the day.
There are some very early ones?
There are, but I can't say if there are portraits of every mayor, that we have photographs of all mayors, as far as I'm aware, but whether or not there is an oil portrait, I can't, I don't know.
So, that concerns me, because I would have thought there'd be a very clear record at the art gallery if that's where they stored, and are they rotated at all?
We, since the Karen hang was put in the refurbished council chamber, the paintings have not been changed?
So, we don't know if it's a consistent tradition through time at all?
No, but it's been, in recent times, it has been consistent, so since post-World War II, I believe that it has been consistent. Prior to that, I am not certain, certainly since amalgamation. Certainly since amalgamation, we're very clear. But anything that predates amalgamation is... Some of those records are not as clear as they might have been.
And so what, do we have a view of the art gallery director around this kind of tradition? I mean, times have changed, and maybe this is not important historically anymore. We have the photographs. I mean, we have the corridor of photographs there already. But do we have any kind of indication from an art perspective?
No, and partly we didn't seek a view from the director of the gallery on this, because this is a different discussion than art in our mind. This is about how you choose to recognise the service of a mayor.
Any other questions? Okay, councillor Benson-Pope, you've indicated the willingness to move something.
Yes, I'm moving option three, the status quo, Mr Chairman.
Do you have a second there? Councillor Vandewes.
Thank you. Can I speak to it now?
Yes.
I think it would be a retrograde step to further cheapen the portraiture that's in the council chamber. It's a traditional room. It was refurbished last century in the tradition of the previous style. All the woodwork that was replaced was appropriately crafted to model what had been there previously. And of course, public galleries were increased and opened up on the side because of the size of the then council of twenty-one. I know how much I enjoy, and more importantly, visitors who look at the chamber enjoy the oil painting originals. I think it's a shame that Mayor Turner didn't join them and wanted to hide the portrait that was painted away in Hirdunni or somewhere far from the light of day. But that notwithstanding, I think the photograph is not in keeping with what else is there. And I think it would be an unfortunate departure from a valuable civic tradition if we didn't grace each mayor with an appropriate portrait. I think the issues of the size, who does it, and how it's hung are all issues that we've got expertise that can manage. But I think it's important that we continue with that. And equally, I don't think that... And I'll raise a question of process in a moment, but I don't think there is, even though this is an expensive piece of gold, I don't think that's a tradition of that contribution from the elected mayor at the end of the term is one that we should break. And can I ask for some guidance, please, from staff about this? At the point, we've obviously got merril candidates vote discussing this issue. But it would seem to me that it would be most inappropriate, given that there is an interest that's greater than that of the general public in respect of the cost of that item, that they should be conflicted and withdraw and not vote. But I'm asking for guidance on that matter.
Ms Graham. Oh, excuse me, one second. I would note that you have a prospective merril candidate who is a second. Are you still happy for him to second that? Was that appropriate? Do we need that checked as well?
We had been asked this question, and given that none of you may be mayor, we thought, and that there is a wide range of candidates, and given that were so many of you to sit back, we may not then have a representative view of the community. The advice we gave when asked was that we thought in this case it was appropriate. The mayor has a direct interest in this matter, because he is the mayor. And any decision here does have a cost to him. But our advice was, in this case, we thought you were all either equally interested or not.
Okay, I'm with you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, I've got some, I'll just put your name there. I was just going to ask another question for clarity, if it's appropriate after we've moved and seconded. But if a current mayor chose not to supply a link, would that just mean they would be missed off the... Not, sorry, this current mayor. But if we carried on with that option, and a mayor at some point in the future chose not to supply a chain, would that just mean they wouldn't be remembered as such? Is that how it would currently go? Do you know?
That would be the case. We haven't checked if there are any mayors who are missing from the chain. But we did check back in recent past, and all mayors appear to have a link in the chain. And, but I have no, we don't have records readily to hand of how those links were funded.
I just have a question about the text of the... I think links is probably inaccurate. It should just be link, because we're only talking about one in the case of each mayor, aren't we? A new link.
Except there are multiple pieces? So that each mayor is required to fund both the medallion and the links that are attached into the chain? So there are multiple pieces?
So the link is the joint?
The link is the medallion, the joint, and the linky piece.
As long as that's clear, that's fine. Thank you.
Councillor Vandewes.
I agree entirely with councillor Benson-Pope that this is a tradition that actually does have real value. I love heritage homes, and I love a lot of old traditions. I keep a lot of old vehicles running. But I don't think that all old traditions have value, and I think there are some times that they should be changed. I don't think this is one of them. And there are a number of reasons for it. We have a lot of amazing local artists, photographers admittedly, as well as oil portrait painters. And what we have here in terms of the merril portrait is not just a fitting and accurate record of a mayor's term in oil, but a, the possibility of producing a completely unique oil work of art. A lot of art has value because of its rarity or its uniqueness. And for the need, having an oil painting of each of our mayors, to me, is something which I think transcends the individual mayor themselves. And if you look further back in history, these oil paintings actually acquire more value and more interest as they slip into history and become part of the artistic historical record as well as, I think, a valued tradition. In terms of the merril chain, I think it's a quite pleasant and quaint thing for mayors to donate a two-and-a-half-thousand-dollar gold link to the chain so that their memory is preserved in this way. I wouldn't think it unreasonable if the mayor decided that he didn't really want to do that and didn't want to be remembered in that way. I don't think the general public is ever going to be in a position to be able to scrutinise all the links and actually see any value in them. The portrait, however, is quite different. In terms of having space to hang them, we could put one on the left of that screen. We could put another on the right of that screen. I suggest that we have a lot of very prime positions in this building and others where merril portraits could and should go. And that these merril portraits, even if we don't particularly value them at the time, will actually grow in value over time, providing a unique work of art and a unique record. My argument for going for an artist's view of a personality rather than just a photograph is that an artist really has the job of teaching people how to see. An artist will have a portrait that resembles the person, but actually picks out of that person's character things that the artist wishes to present. To me, this makes a portrait a far more interesting thing than, for instance, Sukie Turner's painting photo. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson.
So, yeah, just in summing up, for all of those reasons, we have a unique opportunity with the portrait to actually have something that has value now and will have more value as time goes on. To me, the link in the chain, the two-and-a-half grand, whatever, to me, that's something which I'd quite happily be optional. But it's covered under option three, and I'm quite happy the way it is covered there. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson, thank you.
First matter is, I'm just wondering whether the mover is happy for this to be taken in two parts, because I may support the first part, but not the second. I'm not quite sure. Only as one. Okay, thank you.
Have your answer.
Thank you, yep. I'm just contemplating the thought of, if you're a one-term mayor that hasn't done much, whether you get a small picture and then you get a bigger one for each other term that you hold. But that's a matter for discussion and debate later. I'm comfortable with one. And I've tried to look at this as a strategic direction. Where are we going? And the reason I wanted to be an artist, and I'd prefer that it was just a general artist of the choosing of the mayor, is the opportunity for any artist to be involved. And it may be, and that may change. And so that's why I think the strategic direction says we should be encouraging art and not try and limit it down in the opportunities for artists. The second part has challenged me, because I actually don't see the point of mining more gold for something that isn't going to be used and won't be seen much. And I'd rather see the opportunity, while we're looking at redesigning of it, and why I wanted it to be done in two parts, to look at whether a link alone would be significant enough. Because again, looking at that crest, which is what is repeated and repeated and repeated on there, it doesn't actually speak to the multicultural city that we now are. And I think that we could do better. So I'd actually prefer, in taking the theme of councillor Vandewes, is actually, instead of the medallion of the city, you may actually look at what the significant changes of that mayor that be added in, rather than repeating that crest. And so I think an opportunity is being lost if we do this. And I'd rather be putting it out to some other thinking about how that happens. So I probably won't vote for this in the form that it currently is.
Councillor O'Malley.
I would just like to say that if this does not pass, I would hope that we can take the two parts separately, because they are somewhat conflated. The portrait and whether or not the mayor funds the link are not really interrelated things. But generally speaking, if I was to take them separately, I'm going to vote along these lines. So at this moment, I'll vote for this. But I, because I don't think, I think that basically the art and the community component is important here. And I think it speaks to the fact that a lot of things are done for the purpose of tradition, and tradition has a role in large organisations. The very chains themselves are a tradition. They're not, they don't perform a functional role. So therefore, I think the portraits are a traditional response to the gravitas of the mayor's position. And we say that ourselves when we commission that portrait. So that's why I think going to a photograph tends to, maybe want to be a better word, cheapen it. All things being equal, if it was coming down to me, I'd be happy to pay the money in the future. If you had to put these chains, you know, put this up, I think it's a good tradition that the mayor does it. Don't think the economic burden is too great, considering the remuneration of the position. I note councillor Wilson's concepts around the chains or the links. But I don't think this actually gets in the way of that. If we want to think in the future that maybe they have a different design, because we're really only saying at the moment, would the mayor pay for it?
Thank you. councillor Gary.
I want to start by talking about the tours I've taken in the council chambers with a variety of different members of our community. And there is no doubt that the portraits are of great interest to people visiting. They often spark conversations about memories of particular mayors in more recent times and their interactions with them. I'm a person who loves history, and I've found it intriguing to discover. Twelve years ago, I knew that I had an uncle who was mayor during the war years, Andrew Allen. I did not know that I had a great uncle who was mayor in 1909. And on further investigation, I found that link between the gift of the medallion from the Chamber of Commerce, and I believe that Mayor James Hamlin Walker was the first mayor to wear the chain with that on it. So I found that really intriguing. And for me, in terms of my family history, I also, through that, found out I had a suffragette in the family, the wife of Mayor Walker, which was absolutely amazing. So reflecting on history, if we think forward and think to this time, when people are looking back, we want them to be able to track the history. And there's many ways you can do that. I do like the idea of the link. I don't have a difficulty with the mayor paying for it. I think the remuneration allows that to be not an issue. So I like the idea of keeping that in place. I did like the idea that councillor Wilson mentioned around a jewellery design. We've got amazing jewelers in the city. But I think that's another matter that can still be considered further on. Talking about portrait artists versus photography, my personal preference is portrait, because I don't care for photography in that kind of way so much. I don't care for Sukie Turner's, Mayor Turner's portrait, photographic portrait so much. But my personal preference is to see painted portraits there. And I just remember that in the community in which I live, the little community of Broad Bay, there is a world-class portrait artist called Simon Richardson, who I believe did the portrait of Peter Chin, Mayor Chin. And Simon's not well-known in the city, but he has had work hung in the Tate Gallery in London. He's an extraordinary portrait artist. I would like to see us supporting portrait artists in the city. We have a very strong artistic community, and this is one way we can support that. So from the point of view of history, from the point of view of supporting the artistic community, I'm very happy to support this motion. And from the point of view of the mayor being able to afford the paying of the link, I don't see that as a big issue, and I support that as well. But I would like to just park that idea of councillor Wilson's in the back of my mind. I think it's a good one. We should look at in the future.
Any other speakers? Councillor Benson-Pope, you ought to apply.
The only matter I'd elaborate on, Mr Chairman, is that issue that's been suggested of an alternate design or designs for links in the future. There's nothing to prevent any member of the committee from moving in that direction, should this be passed. And I think that's also an idea worthy of consideration. Not only, obviously, there will be a delegation involved to someone to ensure that the overall design of the chains weren't cheapened in any way. But I see no resist, I have no resistance to a modification or development of what's gone before being included in the future. And so if someone could move that, and I'll certainly support that in due course.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? That's carried. Thank you.
Move that foreshadowed motion then?
Feel free. What would you like to move?
That the...
Staff be asked to investigate, develop alternate design possibilities for future links?
Well, I think that this maybe have to be done sooner than that may happen. And that the outgoing mayor may choose in providing the new link to look at alternate designs. And the question then is how that fits in with the art. And I don't know how to, yeah. I certainly think having another one within the crest is unfortunate.
Ms Graham.
Yes.
On the previous item, council has resolved for the chief executive, when we're looking to incorporate the ponamu, to look at the design of the chain. Maybe at that point, in doing that design, we could look at alternatives to the link, because you wouldn't necessarily want each mayor to have some random link, you know, because the chains are our tradition and are historic. But it might be, it's a point well-made, that maybe it's the coat of arms that should be on the crest rather than this.
I'm fully happy to do it that way.
But I'm sure that the chief wouldn't mind if we incorporated that into part of that design process. And it probably, if councillor of the mind, we'll just do that as part of that previous resolution.
Okay, well, if that's the case, we'll just...
And so the previous motion doesn't preclude that, so I'm happy. The link...
Okay, if that's the case, we'll leave that. And I will resolve that we move into non-public for the next item based on the paper, reasons given in the order paper. So we'll just have a couple of minutes to clear the comments. I've seconded councillor Staines. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you.